Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Macon Bibb County Commission Meeting. We are delighted to welcome you here to Government Center and appreciate your patience with us as we get started on our agenda for this evening. As is our practice and custom, we will start off with an invocation and pledge of allegiance to the pledge. The invocation will be given by Prophet MacArthur Lazenby of the Christian Fitness Center, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by two of our GCAP students, Caroline Anderson and Malik Thomas. And I'll say a little bit more about them after they finish leading us in the prayer. Would you please stand as you are able, and we'll start with our invocation and prayer. Prophet Lazenby?
Most gracious and loving Father, we thank you tonight for another opportunity that you've allowed us to serve in this great city. We understand that our leadership extends beyond the borders of county and city. But as we stand tonight in these sacred halls, we understand that there's a call upon this city and our mayor and all commissioners to lead America back to God. We understand tonight, Lord, that we stand as the center of God consciousness for the nation, for there are more cities around the world with churches, but there are more churches per capital in the city of Macon than there are in America. Tonight, it is my prayer that you would move on the hearts of the mayor and every commissioner to understand that their leadership is given to America, not just the city and county lines of America. And I pray that you would give them the wisdom of Solomon, the heart of David, the strategy of Joshua, and bring this nation back to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be seated. Our pledge of allegiance was, tonight, was led by two of our GCAPs students. GCAPs stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students, GCAPs. And our students tonight are Caroline Anderson. Caroline is a junior at Mount De Sales. She participates in Key Club, National Charity League, the Do Something Club, and the Watson-Brown Foundation. Caroline, thank you very much for being here with us. And then also by Malik Thomas. Malik is a junior at Howard High School. He's an active player on the football team, plans to attend Mercy University. Go Bears after graduating from Howard. I think that sounds great, Malik. Thank you both, not just for being here tonight, but also for participating in the GCAPs program this year. We hope that you have become more aware about civics in our community, your role and responsibility that go along with the privileges of being a citizen of this great city and county, state and country. So, thank you very much for being here with us tonight. And Prophet Lazenby, thank you, sir, for a very significant and meaningful prayer. We appreciate you being here with us. With that, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, and the minutes of our pre-commission meeting on May the 5th and our regular commission meeting of May the 5th have been circulated. Motion by Commissioner D. Foale for approval of the minutes. Second by Commissioner Schlesinger. Any further comment, questions? If not, all in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. We have a couple of invited guests tonight, and I'd like to ask them if they would like to come to the podium and address us. First, Jan Bealan and Jonathan Di from the Macon Arts Alliance, and they're going to talk to us and issue an invitation for the Arts Advocacy Breakfast, I understand. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it'll move up. There you go.
There we go.
Whoop. Whoop.
Think I broke it.
There you go. You can just hold it if you want to.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Jan sends her apologies. She couldn't be here today. She's coming, she just got back from Italy. Yeah, she just got back from vacation, and so she is, they got back really late last night. So, I told her that I would take care of this for her. But she wanted me to express her gratitude for all the support that you've given Macon Arts Alliance over the past year and for your future support. We look forward to continuing to work with everyone, and we, and I'm here today to invite you all to the Third Annual Macon-Bibb County Arts Advocacy Breakfast. It's going to be at the Douglas Theater on June 4th, beginning at 7:30 a.m., and we're going to have a fantastic guest speaker from Nashville's local arts agency, Metro Arts, and it's Jennifer Cole. She's an expert on the local arts agency and how arts can be integrated into economic and community development initiatives, and I think she's going to be an excellent speaker, bring some great wisdom and some enthusiasm to the day.
Good. Jonathan, thank you very much. Members of the commission, any question or comments about the invitation? It's June the 4th at the historic Douglas Theater. Doors open 7:30 a.m., and the program would be from 8 to 9 o'clock. Is that correct, Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you very much, not just for being here tonight, but for all that you do with arts advocacy. You got something you wanted to hand out?
Well, I was just going to say, I have some handouts with the, with the dates and times and everything, if y'all.
Good. That would be great. Why don't you go ahead and do that? And while you're doing that, we also have a group that has been invited here tonight in connection with the Lupus Foundation. Did we have representatives of the Lupus Foundation that actually came? You were on the agenda to receive a proclamation. Going once? Going twice? Well, we will, we will present, we will present this proclamation at a later time when representatives from the Lupus Foundation are able to be here with us. But we wish them well in all that they are doing. I'll pass those down that way. I also understand that Andrew Eck is here with us. Andrew, wave your hand. Andrew is the promoter that schedules and puts on pop-up concerts at different venues around the city that are often underutilized and underappreciated, and has a concert coming up, when, Andrew? Remind us.
May 30.
On May the 30th, on the, on the top floor of the parking deck on Mulberry Street. So, if you happen to be, what time does it start?
7:30.
7:30, and what's the admission fee?
$10 in advance, $15 at the door.
$10 in advance, $15 at the door, the top floor, top floor of the parking deck for a pop-up concert. Rabbi Schlesinger understands Elton John is going to be your featured singer.
Eric Clapton.
Eric Clapton, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. But interact, good luck with it, and we wish you well, and thank you for what you're trying to do to stimulate interest and enthusiasm in downtown Macon and showing off different places around, around downtown. That's great. That brings us to the reports from our standing committees. First is operations and finance. Oops. Thank you. I'm about to get, I'm about to get out of sequence. We did have one public comment request on an agenda item. Dr. Holliday wants to talk to us about an agenda item for tonight. Dr. Holliday, thank you for being here. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
One item y'all will be considering under old business is the Senior Citizen Center site, perhaps at the old Miller High School. I think that probably is a better site than further south. But the, what I want y'all to think about, because we have an issue with planning here, is that that high school, where it's located physically with sidewalks and a lot of housing around it, is ideal for high school. You got you a lot of your new high schools are a way out, and yet there are these designing things, and you've, you've heard, new urbanism, safe routes to schools, walkable cities, kids that could actually walk to school or bike. The Miller High School is ideal, simply because the road, the infrastructure is already there for that type of living. Unfortunately, the Board of Education, they don't really have many planners. They're not speaking to MATS. Y'all aren't speaking to them. It's a left-hand, right-hand kind of thing. But certainly the Senior Citizen Center would be better than nothing there, or to give it over to a private company. That building is steel and concrete. It's an extraordinary edifice. It could stand there for hundreds of years, and it happens to be located ideally for safe routes to schools. Planning, under new business, item K, a resolution about MATS, the Macon Area Transportation Study, that also, that's where we're talking about, safe routes to schools, a walkable MATS is something that federal government requires us to have so we can get federal money. And part of MATS is you've got to have a public participation plan that works. What you got now, it doesn't work. The public participation plan, the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, has not met with a quorum in half a year. This body continues to plan and build and vote on dollars for roads, and you are not meeting the federal requirements. Let me say that again. Your Macon Area Transportation Study Group, which allows you to use federal dollars, is not working right now because the Citizens Advisory Committee cannot get a quorum. And that's a serious problem. The people, the citizens that were involved and knew about safe routes to schools and walkable cities, traffic calming, new urbanism, those people were kicked off. And the new design for MATS doesn't work. You got a bunch of new people who don't know how they plug in, and what we got now is a broken MATS. Your Transportation Study Group that allows you to use federal dollars is broken right Y'all gonna have to figure out how to fix it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. And that item will be referred tonight to committees for further evaluation and study, and that'll be heard next Tuesday at the committee meetings. That brings us now to our reports from our standing committees, and first is operations and finance. Chairman Beckel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Operations Finance Committee met on May 12, 2015. It took up, took the following action. Committee approved the following agreements. An agreement with General Technologies for software license and support agreement for computer software maintenance services for the Bibb County Courts. An agreement with Flint Equipment Company for the purchase of a 2015 John Deere 50G with 24-foot bucket, hydraulic excavator for use by Public Works Department in amount of $56,464.70. Also approved an agreement with the Georgia Secretary of State to provide fiber optic connectivity to the local Secretary of State office. Also approved a short-term lease with Newtown-Macon for a concert to be held at 448 Mulberry Street on May 30 of 2015. In addition, we approved an agreement with Tidings &amp; Rosenberg LLP for Phase 1 services to create and implement a comprehensive strategy to establish legally defensible economic inclusion policies and practice for Macon-Bibb County. This company will effectively increase capacity and maximize contract participation by small, local, and minority-owned businesses. This agreement will not exceed the budget amount of $101,380. In addition, the committee approved appropriating $107,870 from fund balance to pay the outstanding pension payment due Bibb County Pension Plan for the Macon-Bibb, make it, keep Macon-Bibb Beautiful participants. That concludes report of operations and finance.
Thank you, Chairman Beckel. Our report from Economic and Community Development Committee, Chairman Schlesinger will give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on May the 12th, 2015, and took the following action. Dr. R. Kirby-Gotze was reappointed to the Development Authority of Macon-Bibb County for an additional four years. The committee also authorized the conditional transfer of 1.115 acres, county, of county-owned parcel located at 1727 College Drive to the Macon Housing Authority for inclusion in the proposed Tyndall Heights Master Plan Development. The committee further authorized the conditional closure and transfer of the county-owned right-of-way located within Alabama Street College Drive and a portion of Elizabeth Street to the Macon Housing Authority for inclusion in the proposed Tyndall Heights Master Plan Development. The Macon-Bibb County Commission approved showing support for the Macon-Bibb County Economic Opportunity Council to continue administering the Head Start Child Care Program in Macon-Bibb County, and the Macon-Bibb County administrative staff was authorized to review the feasibility and economic costs associated with incorporating the new Macon-Bibb County Senior Center at the site of the former AL Miller High School. And this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chairman Schlesinger. Our Public Safety Committee report be given by Chairman Shepard.
All right. The Public Safety Committee met on May 12, 2015, considered the following items. We received an update from the staff on Donan Road Fire Station, and it is anticipated that a groundbreaking event will take place in late fall this year, and that the fire station will be completed by September the 30th, 2016. And then the committee also is considering at our next meeting Tuesday, the appointments for the Pedestrian Fatality Board. And that concludes our report, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Shepard. And finally, the Facilities and Engineering report be given by Chairman Jones.
Facilities and Engineering met on May the 12th and considered and took the following action. Number one, the committee approved a resolution to rename a portion of May Avenue to Apostle David L. Pitt's Senior Boulevard. Number two, the committee approved a resolution to accept the donation of 430 Craft Street. This concludes the report of Facilities and Engineering.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. There are no items on the consent agenda tonight, so that moves us into old business. The first is item A, which is a resolution to approve a software for the court system, and I'll ask the clerk to read that resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a software license and support agreement between Macon-Bibb County and General Technologies Incorporated for computer software and maintenance services for the Bibb County Courts for six years for $2,977,819.51 to authorize the mayor to execute said agreement in substantially the same form as attached heretofore as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion or question? If not, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item B, the purchase of a bucket truck for Public Works, and I'll ask the clerk to read that cap, read that resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Flint Equipment Company for the purchase of a 2015 John Deere 50G with 24-inch bucket hydraulic excavator for use by the Public Works Department in the amount of $56,464.70 to be paid from general funds in substantially the same form as the attached heretofore Exhibit B and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of that resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item C, a resolution to provide fiber optic connectivity to the Secretary of State's office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between Macon-Bibb County and Office of the Georgia Secretary of State to provide fiber optic connectivity to the local Secretary of State office and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item D, which is a short-term lease agreement for a pop-up concert at, on the parking deck at 448 Mulberry Street. I'll ask the clerk to read that resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a short-term lease agreement between Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and Newtown-Macon Incorporated for a concert to be held at 448 Mulberry Street, Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, on May 30 of 2015, in substantially the same form as attached heretofore as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting that resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted, and the concert is scheduled for May the 30th. Look forward to it. Item E is a resolution to hire Tidings &amp; Rosenberg LLP, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by resolution.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Tidings &amp; Rosenberg LLP at a not-to-exceed budgeted amount of $101,380 for Phase 1 of the services necessary for the creation and implementation of a comprehensive strategy to establish legally defensible economic inclusion policies and practices for Macon-Bibb County that will effectively increase capacity and maximize contract participation by small, local, and minority-owned businesses, and providing for inclusion of the funds necessary for the completion of the Phase 1 services in the FY 2016 budget of the Office of Small Business Affairs and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of that, adopting that resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item F, which is an ordinance to appropriate $107,870 from fund balance to pay into the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan, and I'll ask the clerk to read that ordinance by caption.
An ordinance of the Commission of Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, to appropriate $107,870 from fund balance to pay the outstanding pension payment due to the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan of 1968 for the Keep Macon-Bibb Beautiful Commission participants prior to July 31st, 2006, and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of that ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Now, item G is an appointment to the Development Authority of Bibb County. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission reappointing Dr. R. Kirby-Gotze to the Development Authority of Macon-Bibb County for an additional term of four years and for other purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or inquiry? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting that resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item H is a conditional transfer of a parcel of land to the Macon Housing Authority to be incorporated into the redesign of Tyndall Heights Master Plan Development, and I'll ask the clerk to read that resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the conditional transfer of a 1.115-acre county-owned parcel located at 1727 College Drive to the Macon Housing Authority for inclusion in the proposed Tyndall Heights Master Plan Development to authorize the conditional closure and transfer of the county-owned right-of-way located within Alabama Street, College Drive, and a portion of Elizabeth Street to the Macon Housing Authority for inclusion in the proposed Tyndall Heights Master Plan Development and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting that resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Now, item I is a resolution of support for the Macon-Bibb County Economic Opportunity Council, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to show support for the Macon-Bibb County Economic Opportunity Council to continue administering the Head Start Child Care Program in Macon-Bibb County and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Commissioner Lucas, you have a question or comment?
Stay, comment. I urge that we go ahead and support this. It was supported unanimously in committee. Head Start has offered early learning experiences for hundreds of thousands of children over the last 36 years, and it's been administered by the local EOC. I don't see any need in changing the supervision of those programs here and in Monroe County. And so, I know that the mayor has already expressed support for that continuing partnership, and others are on board with expressing their support for the local EOC maintaining that supervision over the Head Start programs. And so, this just says that this commission supports the local EOC in their quest to continue their supervisory capacity as far as Head Start is concerned. And so, I would urge unanimous support of this and that we communicate our concern to the appropriate organizations, and that we encourage all other, all other citizens to join us in pushing to have Head Start remain under the supervision of the local EOC.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. All in favor of that resolution, adopting that resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is unanimously adopted. Item J is a resolution authorizing staff to review the feasibility and cost associated with putting the Senior Citizen Center at the former AL Miller High School building, and I'll ask the clerk to read that resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the Macon-Bibb County administrative staff to review the feasibility and economic costs associated with incorporating the new Macon-Bibb County Senior Center at the site of the former AL Miller High School and for other purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Commissioner Tillman, you have a comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've been listening and hearing from our seniors on this. I think we spent about $79,000 on the feasibility study for the Bloomfield Gillette property. I don't know exactly the cost for this feasibility study. I'm possibly, I don't know. I'm thinking around 30-some thousand. I could be wrong. I would encourage and urge our seniors that, those that have expressed support for or against even this particular facility to, if they're going to share a list or future list of properties, that we go ahead and get the property owners and the information so we can have it, because I think we all want to do and have a final location that's suitable for them as seniors, because they're the ones that's going to be staying there and being a part of this. So, in proposing this particular resolution, it was because it was close in proximity to the current facility that they were at. And so, I'm just hoping that, I think next week, we're supposed to get some, some information, both still on the Gillette property and in the AL Miller property, that's being built as a senior living center over, over there in that area. So, I don't know if there's other, others that's available that I'm not aware of, but I am willing to support whatever and wherever the seniors would want to go that's available, that would fit the $2 million. That is the money that was negotiated back during the 2012, splotched, and that can't change at this point, until we do a possible another splotch to get some other things. So, we're in 2015, and I just want folks to know that this particular money that was set aside... set aside, $2 million, came from a 2012 splotch. And so a lot of these splotch projects were negotiated between the former city and county. And so here we are, trying in 2015 to possibly build a new facility for $2 million that we're told that's virtually impossible, or that we could renovate and get a facility up to par with everything that they want for $2 million. I'll support whatever. But in making this recommendation, I was, thought I was listening to seniors to say they were adamant about Bloomfield. And so in proposing and suggesting this particular center, and then today I heard some other rumblings about this particular facility. So if there's a list, we need that information along with who owns the property and what we can do to go ahead and, because we can't keep spending money on feasibility studies. I know we spent $79,000 on the previous. I'm not sure what this one's going to cost, but that's a lot of money, too, that adds up. So I'll be in support of whatever they want, and that's what I'm hoping with this one. And hopefully, the co-sponsor will convey the same sentiments.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. That item, actually, we're going to present additional information on that at committee meetings, I trust, next week for the commission's approval. And one point of clarification, you are correct, sir, that $2 million was originally allocated in splotch proceeds for the Senior Citizen Center. But remember, we sold the existing Senior Citizen Center to Mercy University as part of a swap for right-of-way that they owned for the Penniman Connector. The value of that is being added. I understand, my recollection is $750,000 approximately, which was the appraised price of the existing center, and that's being added to the total that would be available for the new Senior Citizen Center. So it's actually $2 million of splotch and $750,000 of additional splotch transferred because of the sale of the existing building. Any other question or comment on that resolution? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting that resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. That brings us to item K, which is a renaming of a street here in Macon. And I'll ask the clerk to read that resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to rename a portion of May Avenue to Apostle David L. Pitt's Senior Boulevard and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further question or comment? Mayor Proten-Vivins?
Yeah, I intend to support this, but I hope that on our next agenda, we can include something where we can come up with some criteria for namings going forward.
Excellent point, and I think it would be good for us to establish some criteria for naming of streets and other public items in honor of somebody or in memory of somebody. So I think that would be good for us to do that, and we'll look into putting that on the committee agenda for further discussion. All in favor, no further discussion. All in favor of this resolution adopting the name change of May Avenue to Apostle David L. Pitt's Senior Boulevard signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. That brings us to item L, which is a resolution to authorize the mayor to accept the donation of 430 Craft Street. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by title, caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to accept the donation of 430 Craft Street, Macon, Georgia, to authorize the mayor to execute any necessary documents and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Further question or comment? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting that resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. We have added an item, ladies and gentlemen, that may not be on your agenda. It's item M that was actually added to this agenda as pursuant to the pre-commission meeting. And item M deals with a lease modification of a hangar out at Middle Georgia Regional Airport. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by resolution.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated hangar lease agreement between Macon-Bibb County, Georgia and Four Winds Hangars LLC for the continued use and maintenance of an aircraft hangar at Middle Georgia Regional Airport in substantially the same form as attached hereto as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends adoption. Is there further question, comment, or concern? Hearing none. All in favor of... Commissioner Beckel?
I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
Commissioner Beckel will be excused or recused from voting. Thank you, Commissioner Beckel. Other than Commissioner Beckel, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted.
[inaudible]
This brings us to new business, and all of these items will be referred to a committee for further discussion and debate next Tuesday. First is item A, which is a resolution to adopt the Macon-Bibb County Solid Waste and Materials Management Plan. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item B is a resolution to authorize the mayor to accept transfers of several parcels of property located at 416 Persley Street, 424 Persley Street, 430 Persley Street, 436 Persley Street, 442 Persley Street, and 448 Persley Street from the Macon-Bibb County Land Bank Authority for inclusion in the Jefferson Long Park to authorize the mayor to execute any necessary documents in that regard. I'm going to refer this to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item C is a resolution appointing Commissioner Scotty Shepherd to the Macon-Bibb County Convention and Vista's Bureau Board of Directors. I'm going to refer this to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item D is a resolution authorizing Bragg Jam Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, to hold its 2015 Music Festival in downtown Macon, Georgia on Saturday, July 25th, 2015 to permit festival-goers to carry and consume alcoholic beverages in and about the designated streets of downtown Macon under specific conditions, to require Bragg Jam Incorporated to provide for and reimburse the city for all expenses incurred for security and cleanup. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item E is an ordinance granting to jointly-owned Natural Gas, a partnership of the municipalities of Byron, Cochran, Hawkinsville, Perry, and Warner Robbins hereafter designated as jointly-owned Natural Gas. Its successors then assigns the right and franchise to use and occupy the streets, avenues, roads, public highways, alleys, lanes, ways, parks, and other public places of Macon-Bibb County, Georgia for constructing, maintaining, renewing, repairing, and operating a gasworks and gas distribution system and other necessary means for manufacturing, transmitting, distributing, and selling of manufactured natural or commingled gas within and through Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and fixing the terms and conditions of such grant to provide provisions governing the franchise fee calculations and other purposes. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item F, under New Business, is a resolution to amend the adoption agreement to the ACCG, that's the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, 457B Deferred Compensation Plan for Bibb County Employees. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item G is a resolution to amend the adoption agreement to the ACCG 401A Defined Contribution Plan for Senior Management of Bibb County to reflect the restructuring of Bibb County into Macon-Bibb County and to provide for employer discretionary contributions for Steve Lason in accordance with the early retirement incentive programs offered to other eligible employees of Macon-Bibb County. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding between Macon-Bibb County and Spirit of America Theme Park and Development LLC to postpone the construction of certain park infrastructure until a later date in a form to be approved by the county attorney's office. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for use of inmate labor on public works projects in the amount of $118,500. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to grant an encroachment totaling 2,940 square feet for property located at 978 Elm Street to historic Hills and Heights Development for the fair market value of $3,675. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a multi-party agreement with Jones County, Monroe County, the Macon-Bibb Planning and Zoning Commission, the Macon, Georgia, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Middle Georgia Regional Commission, the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority, and the Georgia Department of Transportation to perform a continuing comprehensive cooperative urban transportation planning process known as the Macon Area Transportation Study. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. That ends New Business, although there may be additional items referred during the latter part of the week to individual committees, so be sure and check your schedule, which will come out on Friday, for other new business that has been referred. That brings us now to public comments on items that were not on our agenda but of general interest. And let me call first on Mr. Donald Richardson, who wants to talk to us about general observations and concerns. Mr. Richardson, you are recognized for five minutes, and we appreciate you being here with us.
Just give you something to reflect on, memory lane. This is an obituary dated March 22nd, 1931, Sunday morning. Funeral announcement of Lieutenant Commander Emory Winship, Jr. And I just want to just read a little something, try to keep some of the local history alive. It said, "Emory Winship was born in Macon, the son of Mr. and Mrs. Emory Winship, Sr., for many years. Made his home at 224 Georgia Avenue, which is still the family residence. He was graduated with honors from the Boys' High School, spent two years at Mercy University, and entered the United States Naval Academy in the class of 1894. The young Mitch Shipman made a two-year cruise after his graduation from the Naval Academy, and thereafter he was promoted regularly until the rank of commander was reached. He served in the Spanish-American War and the Philippine Insurrection. After being placed on the retired list, was put back in service in the World War I. In the fight at Malabon in March of 1899, in the Philippine Insurrection, an incident occurred that resulted in congressional recognition and promotion. Emory Winship was then a lieutenant commander, in command of the Bennington, or cruiser. He performed an act of heroism that has gone down in naval history. He was sent with a detachment with few men to protect a battalion that had landed with a small cannon. On deck, he stayed until the advance of the enemy was stopped. In the battle, Lieutenant Commander Winship was shot five times in the leg and abdomen, and these wounds resulted in his disability and were the cause of several operations. Mr. Winship was promoted four numbers for this bravery. He was retired in 1906. Commander Winship was married in 1904 to Miss Catherine Dillon, a wealthy Californian. They moved to Macon a few years after, and for some time spent the winters at the Georgia Avenue Home and the summers in California. They came to Macon, to Macon, their permanent home about 1912. Again, at the outbreak of World War I, Lieutenant Commander Winship was called again to service. He was sent immediately to California and then to Seattle, Washington, in the recruiting service, and later was put in charge of all recruiting and station in Washington, DC. During the late war, he was promoted to the rank of commander. After his first wife died in the fall of 1920, Commander Winship made his home in San Francisco and Macon. He was married in December 1920 to Miss Dorothy Blunt, the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Jo Blunt, and a granddaughter of the late James H. Blunt, who was congressman for many years, then a score of years. The couple moved to California country place in Ross Valley, California. And these are the family members. Major General Blatton Winship, Judge Advocate General of the Army, Commander Winship's brother, left Princeton, New Jersey yesterday with Miss Catherine Winship, a daughter of the commander, who was a senior at Bryn Mawr College. She was visiting friends at Princeton when news of her father's death received. General Winship and Miss Winship are expected to reach Atlanta today to spend a few days with Didion Winship, son of Emory Winship, and Mrs. Didion Winship before coming. North Winship American Council General at Copenhagen, Denmark, a cousin of the late commander, and his wife are in Florida. They were expected in Macon today or tomorrow. Dr. Herring Winship and Ike Winship of Macon are brothers of the commander Winship." And I just think it's very important to kind of keep a balance of all of our legacies to give us a sense of who we are. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Richardson, and thank you very much for being in, for bringing that to our attention. Next, Mr. Wilson Jones wants to talk to us about the location for the Senior Citizens Building. Mr. Jones, welcome. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the seniors. We have brought a broader group of seniors with us tonight. Y'all, I'd like to show your hands up so we can show that we are here in number. We demand to be treated with respect. We have the right to choose where we desire to meet and fellowship. We have paid taxes most of our lives and voted for our leaders. We expect our commissioners to give us a building we can be proud to meet and fellowship with other seniors. We expect to hear information about our new center before the public talks about it on TV. We would like two representatives of the senior group to meet with the commissioners before anything is settled on a location for a new center. We have signed petitions of over 1,800 signatures who agree that the new center should be centrally located, visible, and easily accessible. By discriminating against us, we will not forget this at the next election, and we are gaining in numbers daily. I had a senior lady at our informal meeting today approach us stating that the city of Macon and the mayor and the commissioners are now getting a reputation of being unfriendly to its seniors and their needs. What you fail to see is that we are looking to the present and future for us now and you and yours in the future, and to have a center that we will be proud to send even our grandchildren to and feel in our hearts we have done the best that we can do. In conclusion, we will continue to walk by faith, and what is faith? It's the ability to dare the soul to go beyond what the eyes can't see. So we walk by faith and not by sight. Hopefully, hopefully, you will reconsider your desires and wants and take into consideration the wants of the seniors it will affect. Respectfully, your voting seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We appreciate your comments, and let me be sure that you understand, ask for the schedule of hearings that is being put out and circulated now regarding the changes to various recreation centers and the senior citizen center. I'm not sure that that hearing has been scheduled, but if you'll give names and addresses to the clerk's office, he can be sure that you receive copies of those notices in advance, and we'll also try to circulate them through the Recreation Department so that you'll know where the hearing is being held. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Next, Recreation generally. Next, Recreation generally, and Mr. Robert Curry wishes to talk to us. Mr. Curry, you still, yes, sir, there you are, Mr. Curry. Thank you for your patience. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and the general audience. I'm here in reference to Recreation. Recreation has been a mission I've been on for thirty-plus years for my area, which is the Bayview area. My area is District Nine. Now, some kind of way I got confused, and I stand to be corrected. I don't know who area is Freedom Parks. I don't know who area that fall upon, down at Planning or Board of Recreation Department or whichever one of you all represent that area. But in that area, we did have a gym at one time that the community could use, but some kind of way, it was converted to a boxing gym, and that eliminated the masses of the people that could actually use the gym from the young to the old, so that just pretty much eliminated the gymnasium part. And last year, it was prophesied about, well, we're going to consolidate. We'll wait till we get together and be Macon Bibb, and then we'll do something about the swimming pool. The swimming pool went bust, it's still bust. Now, we're coming up with a new plan, which we had this plan back in the early eighties, two-point-five million to build recreation in my area, which is Bayview. Some kind of way, the money got missing, the plans got lost. So with the new splotch, we come up with one-point-five, and that was to build a splash pad, outdoor shed, a walking trail, and basketball courts outside, which that in turn put all of the children outside in the elements, be it winter, spring, summer, fall. I think that's pretty ridiculous, but you all are the leaders. Okay, so I've been to different recreation meetings and hearings and the master plan, which started out maybe 2011, 12 with P and Z, where they were supposed to come up with a master plan for all the recreation, asking what did you want in the recreation area where you live, dah 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 dah. But this is the main ingredient that I want to speak on today. I went to the Rutland Center, Rutland High School last Thursday, and it's amazing. They received eight-point-five million dollars for recreation in South-South Bibb County, two million dollars for land, okay? In this meeting, it was discovered that you all, we all, since we Macon Bibb, have two portions of land down there that they are talking about. One parcel has a hundred-and-twenty-three acres, and the other parcel has eighty acres. Now, some people have hopes and dreams, some people have ways and means. So these are the things that the people are talking about, South-South Bibb County. They want twenty-two tennis courts. They want indoor Olympic-sized swimming pool. They want state-of-the-art walking trail. They want a state-of-the-art gym. They want all the amenities that we hope and dream for. Okay, so we all pay taxes, so I say. But my thing is, if you're going to do this, I would certainly hope and appreciate that you could come up with some kind of way to get the polled, the disadvantaged, the oppressed, the left out, the despised and rebuked people to that location, to enjoy some of those amenities, be it through a transportation grant, be it through a block grant, be it through a grant that you can reach back and get three million for a bridge to go across Mercer. You need to be able to get these children that's in these disadvantaged areas to reap some of those benefits that you're talking about putting down South-South Bibb County. Twenty-two tennis courts, that's what they want. A tennis complex, indoor swimming pool, and you put out a children outdoors in the weather, pool bust, took the gym, gives a walking trail, and basketball outside. Everything glitter ain't gold, but half of this story ain't being told. Something is wrong with this picture, truly. It's truly something wrong with this picture. If you all can sit up there and justify this, maybe I'm living in the wrong era, wrong town, wrong... I'm going to Bermuda, by the way, tomorrow, to free myself of all this madness that I've been coming down here dealing with for the last seven months. I cannot understand how you all can justify, this is what the people want now, I don't know what y'all going to do, but more than likely, they got eight-point-five million, so you got something to work with, whether you do it or not. They want twenty-two tennis courts. They want a tennis mess, indoor swimming pool, and all the amenities that they can imagine. Some folks got hopes and dreams, some folks got ways and means. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. We appreciate your patience, appreciate your comments. I'll remind you, same, be sure and get the schedule of hearings from the clerk's office so that you can attend and make your feelings known. And one other comment that I think I would make just on behalf of the commission is that the amount of money was set by the people in the ballot language of the splotch, specific amounts allocated to different ones, and that was part of the ballot language by which we are bound in what we're doing. So just one comment in that regard. Anything further from Commissioners? If not, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
Motion, and second, without opposition or controversy, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.